Nancy Alsop.
Here.
Vicky Wager.
Here.
Steve Ellis.
Here.
Randy Gentry.
Here.
Brenda Wilson. David Thompson.
Here.
Communications from elected officials, other officials, or agencies of the county.
Good evening, Mike Morris, Vigo County Commissioner. Good evening, council people. Hey, a couple of things I wanted to keep on your radar. We're looking at perhaps getting the courthouse cleaned. So put that in your, if you wanted to have it done, getting a couple of bids on it right now. And it looks like it could be maybe seventy or eighty thousand dollars. So keep that on your radar. I think that we'll try to keep the chiller on the courthouse running. There's two new compressors up there on that unit right now. And I think, you know, we've talked about that being maybe a three hundred and forty thousand dollar change out, but I think we'll try to go with that for a while. The replacements for that are in stock in Indianapolis. So if we would have a problem, we could fix it fairly quickly. With the jail demolition and the road rebuilt on the north side, the south side of the building is sidewalk, curb, et cetera, are taking. They weren't in very good shape anyway. So maybe need to be some replacement on the south side of the courthouse for some concrete work. So I think just keep on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rob Roberts with the Vigo County Prosecutor's Office, chief deputy. If I may, I've just got a handout that I would like to provide. First part is just, last year I came before the council and discussed the status of adult protective services at the time. I indicated I would also come back with any updates whenever that time was appropriate. So I wanted to kind of follow up for that. But for those of you that were not on the council last year, a little bit of history. Adult Protective Services is a program that is run through various prosecutors' offices throughout the state that are considered the hub prosecutors' offices. Adult Protective Services then services that county and surrounding counties. It is a contract that is entered into between the prosecutor's office and FSSA at the state level, usually a two-year contract that goes along with the budget cycle for the state of Indiana. If you want to go back twenty years during that time period, we have constantly been asking the state to adequately fund the program so that the needs of the aging community can be met. That has not happened. And repeatedly what we saw was different counties paying for services to make sure that we were helping to try to meet the need, which meant that Vigo County was paying employees that were going into other counties, were paying for gas or vehicles as they were going into other counties, because it was not being adequately funded by the state. And this was a common problem in all of the different hubs. So in 2023, the prosecutors met and decided that we were going to advise FSSA that we would not be renewing contracts in 2025, the way the funding was going at that time. Rather than engage in actually providing adequate funding, they had statutes changed last year during the legislative session that would allow them to enter into contracts with other agencies, not just with prosecutors' offices around the state. Earlier this year, they submitted requests for RFPs to perform this function. They received those RFPs. The Indiana Prosecuting and Attorneys Council, after a vote of all the prosecutors in the hub counties, decided to submit a proposal for that. Feeling that we have employees in place, we know what it entails. We were the best qualified to be able to do that. But we also had a realistic amount of money that it would cost the state to actually provide what is needed for adult protective services throughout the state. That RFP was submitted. Other RFPs were submitted. Those were reviewed approximately six or eight weeks ago. And at that time, they then came back and asked for a best and final offer from the different people that had submitted. The original proposal from the Prosecuting and Attorneys Council was approximately eighteen million a year to adequately fund staff and provide everything so that the counties weren't paying for this. At the best and final offer, they said that we could do it for ten million a year. After the best and final offers were submitted, they then asked for new RFPs in the amount of a maximum of six point five million per year for a three-year commitment. I'm not sure how they can make a three-year commitment on a two-year budget cycle with the state, but that was what their RFP called for. Prosecuting and attorneys met, decided that we would offer to meet their eighteen point five million, but over a two-year period, not a three-year period, a new RFP was submitted. What does all this mean? This means that we may be losing adult protective services as a county offered service. Depending on what happens, it may be taken over by some external agency that's making these, that has also made RFPs or submitted RFPs for this process. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, for you to be aware that that's something that's going on, that will have an impact on our community one way or another. How that ultimately plays out still remains to be seen. The new round of RFPs at six point five million per year, the deadline for that was last Friday. So there has not been anything, any response back since that last communication that we made during that, before that deadline. So any questions on adult protective services? I tried to be as succinct as possible.
Mr. President, what kind of a timetable are we looking at for any decision that we might, for planning purposes?
Well, our contract ends June 30th of this year, the previous agreement that we entered into. So the state has to have something in place by then. How or when they think they'll be able to do that, if they don't go with the prosecutors, I really have no idea, because that involves training enough investigators and directors and case managers to handle thousands and thousands of cases throughout the state of Indiana. And to be able to do that when we're already in March seems like a pretty heroic task. So whoever, again, prosecutors already have the system in place. We already have the personnel in place. So if they go with our bid, fantastic. We get to keep our employees in place and hopefully provide services, get additional employees so that we can do what needs to be done. But I don't, they have given no timeline for when they will make their final decision.
So as far as the Budget Committee for the county would be concerned, we should go ahead and plan that we have, we should plan to do it, I suppose.
For twenty, yes, for 2026 and into '27, yes. That is a distinct possibility. But again, if it's funded appropriately, the county's not going to have to provide any additional funding. And that's certainly what prosecutors are fighting for right now.
We would just plan, you guys could just have a party with the money. Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions on that?
Just curious if they took it over, sorry. If they took it over, would the type of services be limited or changed?
The RFP describes the exact same level of services that are currently being provided. So certainly we would expect whoever's going to take it over to maintain those services. I think the biggest challenge is going to be, often our investigators are going into dangerous situations. Not every time, but often they are. And it's their connection with our office that gives them the solid connection with law enforcement so that law enforcement responds promptly to assisting on those situations. I'm very concerned that if we lose that connection, that it's going to make it much more difficult for anybody going into those types of situations.
And I would assume that the prosecutors made that point.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing I have on there, just to kind of, for those of you, if you follow the legislative session, hopefully you are aware of this bill, House Bill 1006. Many of you are already familiar with reimbursements from the state for certain processes within the criminal justice system, specifically our public defender's office. Currently, they receive a reimbursement from the state for about forty percent of their expenses on felony cases. That includes the salaries of the deputy prosecutors and some other aspects of it. House Bill 1006 currently, for those of you that have been with us for a couple of years, you know the difficulty that we have had in hiring deputy prosecutors. You also are aware that you guys made some heroic efforts to up the salaries of deputy prosecutors that helped us to be at full staff for the first time in three years on our deputy prosecutors. So that was obviously a very important thing. But salaries, since we did that, since we had that discussion two years ago, attorney salaries and attorney shortages have continued to plague prosecutors' offices throughout the state. We have currently got a deputy prosecutor position open. We had a deputy prosecutor retire. And we've discussed and made offers to attorneys within the community, but we haven't been able to fill that spot yet. So it's been open for a month and a half right now. That being said, House Bill 1006 is going to provide an opportunity, both for the county to engage in reimbursement from the state. But there are certain, as always, conditions that are established with that. But perhaps the biggest condition is the minimum salary for deputy prosecutors. That won't affect the elected prosecutor's salary, that won't affect my salary, but it would affect the deputy prosecutor's salaries. Currently, our salary range for the deputy prosecutors is eighty thousand a year, up to eighty-eight thousand a year, depending on what type of responsibilities they have in our office. And so from there, the current legislation would require that the deputy prosecutor's salary would be fifty-five percent of an elected full-time prosecutor's salary. If you calculate that out, that is one hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, six hundred and fifty-five dollars per year salary. But when we, and, so when we look at that cost and we look at the reimbursement, fifty percent of that would be reimbursed for those deputy prosecutor's salaries. An additional, an additional up to fifteen thousand dollars per person on fringe benefits could be reimbursed. So right now, the county is paying roughly eighty to eighty-eight thousand plus benefits for all of our deputy prosecutors. With this program, if the legislation passes and Vigo County chooses to participate in it, it could be a substantial savings to the county overall. While the salaries would increase, fifty thousand dollars of that salary would be paid by the county, but fifty thousand would be reimbursed. And then fifteen thousand of the fringe benefits would also be reimbursed. So that could be a savings of up to forty-five thousand dollars roughly per deputy prosecutor, for a full-time deputy prosecutor in the county. Additionally, the legislation currently also says that rather than the forty percent reimbursement for public defender's expenses, that would go up to fifty percent. So there should be some additional potential savings there. So the interesting thing about this legislation, it's declared an emergency. So it would go into effect potentially as soon as it's signed by the governor. And so that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. This is something that obviously if it does pass, we would hope that Vigo County would take full advantage of the savings as well as the incentives that would come along for our employees for something like this. So there's a little bit more information that I've highlighted in there about this. There's a special prosecutor unit, as well as a prosecutor review board that's part of the legislation. That doesn't directly impact our county as much as the salary proposals and the reimbursement would. So there's a little bit more information there. Can I answer any questions?
Question, just for the Budget Committee. The reimbursement for prosecutor and public defender will be the same?
If the statute, if the legislation passes as currently. Yes, and it did pass the House and it has been presented in the Senate and assigned to a committee in the Senate.
Thank you.
Counselor Gentry.
Rob, question is, how many deputy prosecutors are we talking about? That we would bump up to the hundred thousand?
That would be, I believe.
If you were fully staffed?
I believe that's fourteen.
So fourteen would go to the hundred thousand?
Yes.
And then under fifty percent would come back on reimbursement, just on the salaries alone?
Correct.
Counselor Ellis.
Is there any timeframe as to when this additional, the additional funds would stop, such that the council would then have to pick up the additional funds again?
Obviously, it would be passed as legislation that both creates the funding for it as well as the implementation of the program. They would have to change that legislation. It's not just a monetary allocation that's there for every two years. The statute would compel the state legislature to fund it as needed for each biennial session.
Thank you. Any further?
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, moving forward, reports from committees, there are none. Resolutions and ordinances other than appropriations, first reading. Resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation, 2025-02 Parks Equipment Repair.
Vigo County Superintendent Adam Grossman, good to see you guys today. Pretty cut and dry. Transferring from new equipment to one thousand to equipment repair. The only good thing about blowing up a piece of equipment is doing it early in the budget season. So we're able to kind of retool what we're going to do and take it from there. Any questions? That's all I got.
Got off easy.
All right, thank you.
Ordinances relating to appropriations, first reading. A, additional appropriation, 2025-14 Security Cameras at the Courthouse.
Good evening, council. Mark Klinkenberry, Vigo County Commissioners, and I have with me also Tom Little. First, I want to thank President Thompson and the Auditor's Office for letting me go first. I am hosting a fundraiser for the Swope tonight from 6:30 to 8:30. So come on by and have a glass of wine after you work. So I'm trying to get out of here, you know, by six. But anyway, so first thing is the cameras. Commissioners are requesting one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars out of the Lit Special Purpose Fund, Fund Number 1114, thirty thousand out of the 37850 Professional Services, and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars out of the equipment for security cameras. One of the primary responsibilities of the Vigo County Commissioners is maintaining the many county buildings. And a big part of that is providing security for our employees as well as the public. Over the last few years, security in this building that we're in right now has been greatly improved. Two years ago, anyone could have walked into this building without going through security. Thanks to Joanie Wise and her Health Department, a grant was secured to fund the security checkpoint you see today. Many of the improvements you see now throughout the building, such as swipe cards and things like that, came about by the result of suggestions by a group of department heads, employees, and elected officials. That group was called the Vigo County Crisis Management Team. Last summer, Director of Security, Tom Little, came to us with a request for exterior cameras at the courthouse. While the courthouse had interior cameras and a security checkpoint, it had no exterior cameras. At that time, we received two quotes. One was from EAS Technology Systems at twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-three cents. And one was from Innovation Communication Systems at thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. After reviewing the two estimates, we chose the ICS estimate because it included one more camera plus a PC and TV for the security station. ICS also included an allowance of sixty-five hundred dollars for directional boring. We don't want to have to tear up all the sidewalks. So to get all the cables around, we will have to bore around the courthouse. At last month's meeting, it was suggested by members of the council that we should consider adding cameras, as well as replacing the aging cameras inside the courthouse. So in your packets today, you should have three different package options to consider from ICS. Number one is the original at thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Number two is ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. And number three is one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. I gave these as options so that you can, you know, have something to pick from, but that's, we went with the highest one, because we can always go down, we can't go up, as we found last month. Please reach out to me, Tom Little, or ICS Representative Steve Clark over the next few days for any questions you may have. Tom has asked three other companies for estimates. Two have turned down the request, but we do hope to have one by the end of this week. Is that correct? Yes. One of the main reasons that we have chosen ICS as our preferred provider is because this is the system that is currently in use at the Vigo County Jail and other places throughout the county. They've been a great partner to work with. And I'd also like to read a letter of support from Sheriff Fell and IT Specialist Jeff Fox from Sheriff's Department. Please allow this letter to serve as a recommendation for the acceptance of the quote for added cameras for the Vigo County Courthouse by Innovation Community Solutions. The Vigo County Sheriff's Office and Jail have been clients of ICS for over fifteen years and found their products, services, and support to be outstanding. ICS has provided services to not only the sheriff's office, but also the jail, courthouse, 911 center, and annex, and is also a vendor of the Vigo County IT Department. The Exact Vision Professional IP Camera Software and Axis Cameras System proposed will fully integrate with current systems and has proven to be a quality product that has been used by Vigo County for these many years and found to be extremely dependable. ICS has also been extremely responsive to issues with any product they support, and we have found their support to be quick and easy. As a local company, they come onsite and resolve the issue without our staff having to troubleshoot via telephone call or remote support. This type of service is vital to our operations as staff does not have the time nor expertise to perform troubleshooting tasks and because these issues are safety-oriented. ICS prioritizes our need for service when necessary. Signed Derek Fell, Sheriff, and Deputy Jeff Fox. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, Tom?
Just briefly, I guess. I'm waiting on a quote from EAS. It should be here in this day or two, hopefully. I did reach out to other companies, Convergent Technologies. At first, they said, no, they're not going to do it. They will give us a quote in April. Securitas basically said, I'll quote it, "I won't be very competitive against some small local person like that. I will most likely pass on this." That was from Securitas, so they're out. I know last time we talked about the price on the cameras that possibly could get them cheaper. I kind of dug a little deeper to that. Let's say, for instance, off Amazon, you can get the same camera that we quoted for last round was, this time it's fifteen, or I'm sorry, one thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's from Amazon. Now, I looked into it, the seller info is Tom Kennedy from Pennsylvania in Suite 127. He's had two reviews, both five stars since 2001. So that kind of gives you an idea of maybe some shady things, I don't know. Going back to the quote for the cameras, Steve from ICS included everything that needs for that one camera. So it's the four parts going into one camera. That's why the price is up a little, you know, somewhat. So it's been itemized. So you have the ground junction box that has to be a box that has to connect all the wires. It's just a big green box that they could get access to. You need two of those. Those are roughly four to five hundred dollars each. He doesn't use the cheap stuff. So there's that. The concrete for the pole, the new pole, the mounting hardware, just basic stuff like that. Yeah. So, any questions?
Counselor? Counselor Gentry?
Commissioner, maybe Tom, I don't know. When ICS comes out and does this, is this all included in the package as well? So like if we have a camera go down, they come out and look at it? Or do they charge us for that extra service?
It's a five-year warranty.
So all labor, everything? Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I don't think you'll get that from Amazon. Same question.
Okay. Anything further?
Okay. Again, feel free to reach out, you know, between now and next week if you have other questions. So you want me to move on to the next?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see here, where are we at?
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, the Commissioners and, there you are. Okay, well, I'll get started and then I'll let Gretchen.
This is the Additional Appropriation, 2025-15, correct? Public Defender's Office remodel?
Seventy-five thousand dollar remodel, yes. Yeah, Lit Special, out of Lit Special Purpose Number 1114. Okay. I'll say a few things and then I will kind of go over this layout that you have here. As you all know, office space in the annex and courthouse is at a premium. We currently lease off-campus office space for at least two different county departments. In the past few weeks, we were tasked with finding a space for mental health coordinator for Judge Kelly. After several days of looking and making calls, we were able to find a large closet on the main floor of the courthouse that we were able to convert into a small office. These are the kinds of things that we deal with daily regarding office space. Two years ago.
Could you give me your official title? Because I got Director of Public Defender Campus.
Chief Public Defender.
There you go.
Two years ago, Chief Public Defender Gretchen Etling asked me to come look at the space they had, to see if I had any ideas for the storage and office space problem. I had heard rumors of how overrun they were with files and file cabinets. What I saw was unbelievable. They had filing cabinets everywhere and stacked to the ceiling. What should have been used for attorney-client meetings were instead used for storage, forcing meetings outside of the office. These are files that they are required to save, and we simply had no other space in the county to store them. With the completion of the General Services Building in 2024, they were able to move these files into the nineteen hundred, one thousand, nine hundred and twelve square foot storage space in that building. They used all nineteen hundred and twelve square feet of it. Now, just think of that much storage in your office. Now that all these files have been moved, we would like to remodel a significant portion of the space. This remodel will include adding of walls, painting, HVAC, ductwork relocations, electrical work, and floor coverings. On your handout, you will see areas highlighted in yellow. These areas are a part of the remodel. Some of these areas will only be painted, others will get new walls and doors. We are requesting seventy-five thousand dollars to complete this work. In lieu of a general contractor, I will oversee the project and save the county twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. I would be happy to meet with any of you onsite over the next few days and show you the proposed project. It is also worth noting, and I think Gretchen can speak a little more on this, that the state of Indiana will reimburse the county up to forty percent?
Right, forty percent.
Is that correct? Forty percent of the project cost, the same as what they're going to do with the space and the storage.
That's a different calculation, but yeah, based on that.
Right, okay. I'll let Gretchen speak.
At first, I would like to thank the Commissioners, because as Mark indicated, Commissioner, I feel that this is something that has existed for years and years and years at our office, and we've just compensated for it. But with going paperless, it's an end to the paper. So we now have the storage of the files that were paper, and we've been paperless now for three years. So it's not going to be a continuing problem. So that being filled out there, and once the state will come up with an agreeable retention policy eventually, I think the county can take that back after it's paid off over the ten-year period of reimbursement. I have spoke to the state regarding reimbursement of this space, and it submitted it, and they said that it will, again, since it's over the forty thousand, be at the twenty-quarter reimbursement over ten years, but the actual cost would be forty-five thousand to the county after the forty percent reimbursement. And one thing that the renovation is including is moving of the entrance to our office is going to be inside. So people that will be coming to our office will be coming in the east door over here, and then they will go back over into an area, they'll open the door, and then go into our waiting room. So that currently, the entrance into our office is just off the parking lot. There's no security. We don't have the security there. There's no checkpoint for the individuals that come in our office. And I think that is something that we've wanted to do for a long time, but we didn't have the room. have the room until the office undergo the move of the files over to the general purpose building. And as Mark indicated, or Commissioner, sorry, had indicated that they are going to reimburse this, again, on a 20-quarter basis for the construction of that building. It's done at a different calculation, but once they come out here, they will inspect it, they'll base it on the cost of the square footage that could have been rented out, and then spread it out over 20 quarters.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Let me just also say that over the years, that no one has been more vigilant about the reimbursement than Chief Public Defender Etling. She's on it, and we get that money back like a top. And it's been so crowded over there that, as Judge Adler pointed out, that the mice were hunched back. It was terrible.
Okay, it was a struggle. But yes, we do, and I embrace that the prosecutors will, with the House Bill 1006, will get the 50% reimbursement raised up.
Even better, even better.
Yeah, that would be a tremendous plus to the county to get that reimbursement.
So, good deal.
Any questions?
If I could tell you a minute real quick about, so on the layout I have here, on the second page is how that layout is right now. So you can see that we are going to be creating seven additional office spaces, where now there was a lot of open space, and we'll be, again, creating seven spaces. So this here in green, not all of that is going to be major renovation, but that is all the different areas that could be touched with paint or whatever. So again, to be happy to go over that with anybody that wants to stop by and take a look at it.
Thank you. Counselor Wilson?
It may just be my brain, oh, sorry, it may just be my brain, but are the directions correct on this layout?
Pardon me?
Are the directions correct on this layout?
I believe so, yes.
Just turn it up.
Because it throws you off, because we have an entrance, I think, north.
Yeah. In the new layout, there's no entrance on that north side from the outside.
Okay. Yeah, I had to pull a Joey from Friends and step into the map.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Last, but before I go last, I want to welcome the hardest-working state senator in Indiana, Senator Good. And I'm not kidding. He is everywhere. We will be seeing him tomorrow, the chamber's going over there, President Thompson's going to go with some of us, and we're continually advocating at the state level for our community. And he is doing a phenomenal job, so just wanted to welcome Senator. Let's see, last thing I have...
This is the additional appropriation 2025-16, the KC?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Thank you. Let's see where we're at. This would be, we're requesting $5,000 out of the opioid account for the KC. Today, they hosted what's called the Circle of Change. It was an event at the Convention Center, and I was, for whatever reason, I was on a panel at lunchtime, and there were over 150 people there. We had represented from the local community, Union Hospital, Juvenile Probation, Hampton Center, Vigo County Schools, KC, and Norm Lattlemilk with the group homes. We would like to help them with some of the costs of this. They chose to have this in our Convention Center when they probably could have had it somewhere a little less money. So we have almost $863,000 in the opioid account right now, so we would request $5,000 of that money towards this...
Counselman Gentry?
Commissioner, in regards to the restricted fund, have you checked to make sure that it would be appropriate for us to tap into the restricted fund for this?
Well, we also have about $160,000 in unrestricted, too. So we, I'm not sure if that was taken out of the right one or not, but I know we have unrestricted funds, too.
As far as the program, Commissioner, though, was the program directly related to opioid remediation at the KC?
Well, it had to do with children, addictions, opi, yes. It was all of the above.
Well, if it doesn't fit, just take it out of the unrestricted fund, because I know, like you said...
Correct, yes, yes, that'd be fine. That's all I have?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Any other questions?
I was just going to make a comment to thank Commissioner Lincolnbeard for making the offer to oversee the project, because that's kind of going above and beyond, because that's his expertise outside of, outside of his role here. So thank you for offering. Also, thank you to whoever put the page numbers on here. That's hugely helpful.
Brady, he's obsessive, compulsive.
All right, moving forward. D, additional appropriation 2025-17, Alternative Dispute Resolution Fund.
Thank you. Lakshmi Reddy, Judge of Vigo Superior Court II. The Alternative Dispute Resolution Fund was established about eight years ago, so I've been coming here just about every seven years to ask for it to be re-appropriated. What it does is, when there's a divorce filing and people pay the fee and don't get a fee waiver, there's an additional $20 that's charged that goes into a fund. And we've got very specific reasons why we can use that. We've been letting it accumulate over time, so it sort of serves as a backup, and we don't have other funds to pay for things. So we can use it for things like conflict resolution, mediation, some parent coordinators, things like that. So last year, we did have to dip into it, because we ran out of money from the family court grant, so that's what that money is for. Hopefully, I'm going to get permission from the state to use it for drug testing, because I've run out of that money, too. So that's what I'm asking, is for that amount to be re-appropriated. We don't put it in the budget, because I don't know until December 31st how much we collected over the course of the year. So I think, I can't remember the amount, it's about a little over $66,000.
On here, it's $66,569.12.
And 12 cents. Any questions?
You're requesting the total amount?
The total amount. Because it cannot revert back into the general fund.
Okay. Questions from counsel?
It's a good project.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Additional appropriation 2025-18, Merit Deputy Funding.
Good evening, counsel. Derek Fell, Vigo County Sheriff. Last year, I realize the council's knew is what it was in 2024. That being said, we are constantly looking for ways to fund the Sheriff's Office through grants, and we obviously use our commissary account to fund a variety of things. That being said, last year, we had a grant committee look into applying for an extension for our COPS grant we had received approximately four or five years ago. There was some space there to get possible an extension on that. So our grant committee applied for that funding during that timeframe, which didn't happen overnight, it was over a few-week period. Spoke to a couple council members who suggested, you know, that I come before the council and make the request for the additional deputies. So during that time, we were waiting for the funding. I was informed the council, the first meeting that we had made it through the first phase of the grant process, approval, if you will. By the next meeting, we had been denied the grant funding in total, so the grant was no longer an option. At that time, the 2024 Vigo County Council approved the three merit deputy sheriffs. I was, I spoke to a variety of council members, as well as the auditor's office. They informed me that I could hire those three deputies on January 6th. I hired those three deputies on January 6th. I recently spoke to President Thompson in recent weeks, who advised that I needed to come before the council to ask for appropriation for the funding of those three deputies. To my understanding, the council did not appropriate the funds in 2024, so that's why I'm before you this evening.
Questions from counsel? Counselman Gentry?
Sheriff, when was the, again, not being here?
Sure.
So I've done a little bit of research, but I just, since you're here, I'm going to ask you, when was the grant process started? When you, when did you want, when did you apply for the grants?
This particular grant?
Yes, sir.
Oh, gosh, it was probably 2021. We received a grant for seven additional merit deputy sheriffs. At that time, the council approved two of those deputies, so there were still five out there that we could still get if the council ever approved those five. So you reached to a point at the end of the grant where you can ask for an extension of the grant. So we made that extension, or we made that extension request, I'm sorry, but we were denied that request at that time.
So we had been receiving grant money for two?
Correct.
And then it just, the spigot turned off, right?
It was, yeah. So basically, it was 100, it drops down percentage points. I think year one, it was 75%. Year two was 50. Year three, it was 25%. So it's for three years, the fourth year, the council picks up the full funding cost of those additional deputies.
And then that was for two, and then you came before the council in December. When did it get denied? When did you finally get word that it was denied?
I believe it was December meeting, I believe, yeah.
December? And then you came before the council at that time in December and asked for three deputies? Is that three deputies beyond the two?
Yeah, so those two, the two deputies that we originally received, we've had those deputies on our staff for, again, approximately three years. So yes, we've been asking for additional deputies for the last six years, and we believe that we needed, you know, seven, eight, nine additional merit deputies, starting from six years ago. So we've been trying to build towards that over the last few years. So the three deputies I asked for at the end of the year originally were, we were hoping that they would be grant-funded, but during the process, the grant was denied, which the council knew, you know, we were upfront and honest with them and transparent about
Mr. President?
Yes?
Let me just add this in here. At that time also, we had had some reserve deputies that would ride out with the guys at night, and we, you know, that was some comfort to the fellows, because when our deputies are out in the county, I mean, the nearest aide, if they would get into a jam up, would be 20 minutes away. But as we started losing city police officers, reserve deputies got plenty hard to get to sign on. So we were having guys out there with no backup at all. The council at that time began to realize we needed deputy sheriffs, and, you know, we hoped that we would get the grant, but we decided that, you know, we would put the deputies in there, and that's why we put the three deputies in there. But the grant pooked out on us, and we just said, well, okay, we're going to pay for them. I mean, how much is a deputy's life worth? And that's what brought that decision about.
If I could add, previously, again, going back five, six years ago, we had our minimum staffing was three merit deputies on patrol at any given time to patrol this entire county. Since we've been, we've received these additional deputies, we're now up to our minimum staffing of four. So it has made an impact. We're not fully seeing the full impact yet, because deputies are still in training, obviously.
Counselman Gentry?
Okay, so I want to make sure I understand the math on this. You had two. They were funded by grant. The grant stopped. We still have those two, and we added three. So now we're fully funding five positions that no longer has any grant money associated with it, correct?
If you're talking about associated with that grant originally, that is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for maybe the auditor's office or Michael. My book doesn't have a appropriation amount.
I have that here. I got it from the auditor's office yesterday.
Page four.
Forty-four. 257, 650.
So the request for those three deputies is $257,659.50?
I had $759, but yes.
I may have read it wrong. Did I read it wrong? No, okay, all right. Any further requests or questions from counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
F, additional appropriation 2025-19, Health Department, Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club, Vigo County Health Department, contract employees, Griffin Bike Park Education Center.
Good evening. Joanie Wise, Administrator, Vigo County Health Department. So looking at the unappropriated carryover funds from 2024, again, I warned you, you'd see me the first few months of the year. So when I was looking at what our wants and needs are to utilize the funding, one of the partners that kept coming up around the state that's a good partner with HFI, Health First Indiana Funding, is the Boys and Girls Clubs around Indiana. And so I reached out to Bobby Moore, and he's the CEO of the Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club, and we talked about some of the goals of this funding, and what behaviors we could see change. You know, how would we measure it? What would be the expected outcomes, you know, description of the activities? And we were able to hammer out a good little plan as to far as their assessed needs and what we could do to assist them. And so I'm going to have Bobby Moore come up and talk to you a little bit more about the Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club, and I also think that he brought Pat Ralston from the board and Mike Ireland.
Thank you, Joanie. Good evening. Just to give you, I don't want to take up all your time, just to give you a little bit of background about the Boys and Girls Club and what we do. Right now, we're located at 75 South Brown Avenue, which is an old metal school. We occupy the west end of the building. We just completed a $1.4 million renovation of that part of the building. And just some of the highlights of what we're able to do. When we're located at the Chanchero's, Old Chanchero School, we probably had about 35 to 40 kids a day. With the new location, we are averaging over 100 kids a day and providing education and recreational programs for those particular kids. We have a lunch and snack and breakfast program. So this is really some amazing statistics right here. So between 2023 and 2024, we served over 10,539 meals to all those kids that attend the Boys and Girls Club. The membership of the Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club, which Joanie has put in her proposal, is only $30 a year. So that $30 a year is for any particular child. Our after-school program runs from 2:30 PM until 7:00 PM. We have bus transportation, plus four other buses pick up kids at the elementary schools and bring them to our club. Those particular programs that we run is Triple Pay Fitness, Power Hour, Project Learn, and Club Tech 1 and 2. Club Tech 1 and 2 is a basic programming at the Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club, but with the new renovation, we are in need also of 20 brand-new computers to be in that particular room. Our Power Hour is an educational program for those kids that come to the club after school. They participate in one hour of education every single day they come in. And then our STEAM program, our STEAM program is conducted by Peyton Henderson at the Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club, and that STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Education, Arts, and Math. And so each and every day that the kids come to our club, they're provided some type of educational program for them. That is a year-long program. The club is open over 255 days a year. During our summer day camp, our summer day camp is only $60 a week. The reason to that is so low is because we have a lot of kids that's at our club that cannot afford that. So our motto is, we will not turn any kid away that want to participate. Last year, we probably given out $3,000 to $4,000, $3,000 to $4,000 of scholarships to needy kids. The majority of our kids that participate at the Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club are at-risk, underserved, and underprivileged kids. And so our job, with the help of the board, we make sure that each and every kid is not turned away from our club.
Any questions for Bobby?
Bobby and I worked out a tentative budget, not locked into it, but just so you can have sort of an idea of what is that we're looking at.
Thank you.
And we've looked at things like nutritional education, tobacco and vaping prevention, trauma and injury prevention. Looked at things like having the State Department of Health's oral health screenings, vision and hearing screenings, just, you got a captive audience, so it's a great opportunity in this safe haven for a lot of kids. It's a safe, consistent environment where they trust the adults, have positive things to do, and can get a meal. Get some of them, it's their only meal of the day.
And just a quick note, so Joanie Minster's trauma-informed. So our Boys and Girls Club, there's thirty-one Boys and Girls Clubs throughout the state of Indiana. We are a trauma-informed site. We just completed that certification just a month and a half ago, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yep, thank you, David. Thank you, Joanie.
You're welcome. Thank you. The second thing that I have on here with carryover funding is our contract employees. And I'm asking for the carryover to be used for our summer interns that would work for eight weeks, four of them, five hours a day. Our contract data entry individual for our Environmental Health Division, we moved to a new cloud-based program called Inspect2Go. And this will give us the capabilities of this air-cloud-based program to look at our septic, food, body art, lead, and recreational water inspections and information. So we have to have somebody like right now that's been doing our, all of our septic systems, and it's over eleven thousand, thousands of them to enter. So that's the other one. And the last one on here of the contract employees is for a registered nurse. You know, there's a registered nurse shortage around the United States and in Indiana. It's very difficult for us in public health to compete with the, with the private market. I mean, you can go into any elevator of hospitals and clinics, and they have five thousand and ten thousand dollar sign-on bonuses. The salary that our registered nurses are classified at is correct for public health nurses, based on what they do. But it's not the salary that a lot of registered nurses want. It's fifty-three thousand, they can go in the private sector and get seventy and above. So what we've been fortunate to have is contract nurses that are retired nurses that still have active license that are willing to come in and help us, especially with our communicable disease cases that we have to investigate in the certain timeframe that the time, that the state describes. And so that's been extremely beneficial to us. Human Resources can affirm to you that we, sometimes our registered nurse position will stay open for a year, if not more. It's just finding that right fit of the hours and the pay with that individual's life. Lastly, and we can go back over any of this, lastly, we had a little carryover in our four series. And we had allocated all of our four series out of the twenty twenty-four budget to Griffin Bike Park, to their building. And so what I would ask is you to consider appropriating that small amount that was divvied out last, the fall of twenty twenty-three. And it was from the counties that did not accept HI, HFI funding that first year. So budgets had already gone through and had been approved in, in all the counties. So I'm just asking that that small additional amount be punted over to the Parks Department for Griffin Bike Park building.
Questions from council? Thank you.
Okay.
Your...
Oh, I'm getting it.
Amendment, amended salary ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six, redefining and expanding existing health department.
Joanie Wise, Administrator, Vigo County Health Department.
Do you have any identification on you?
I do, ma'am.
Lucky for you.
Okay. It goes back to what I just described with the contract nurse. And periodically, we are able to get a Director of Nursing to manage the clinic. With the salaries not being competitive, I cannot get a nurse with a master's degree to come work for the amount of money that is there. In my decades of being here, out of all six of our divisions, that's the most difficult division to manage. It has to have somebody. And out of all of our DONs, there's only a few, with probably the best being a, had a military background, that was able to guide the clinic in the manner it should be. So working with Cara Wright, we talked about having an office manager instead, instead of having a Director of Nursing and utilizing that extra funding to boost up an, an existing position to be able to do the things within that job description of an office manager. The Director of Nursing position would go away, and it would just become a registered nurse position. And again, the, the cost to the county would be four hundred and seventy-nine dollars for this, for this job redefined and expanded responsibilities for an existing position change.
Sounds good.
Councilwoman Gentry?
So, so in this particular scenario, you're taking a grade thirteen, dropping it to grade ten?
Correct.
And just giving you more human bodies available to your, your team, right?
And yes, and it would take an existing clerical position, which is a four, and move it up to a ten. And the only difference, it would be between the vacated DON position, you can see then what a current registered nurse's salary is, what the difference is, what the medical clinic manager's salary would be, what the current clerical assistant is receiving. And then you can see that's just a very, it's a four hundred and seventy-nine dollar difference.
So, so you're, you're taking one grade thirteen, dropping it to ten, taking one grade four and moving it to a ten?
Correct, because they would assume the responsibility for the management of the clinic.
I, I, I'm not following. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm just...
Ask me again.
Yep, so, so walk me through, you're going to take a nurse?
A Director of Nursing position.
Drop it to just a registered nurse?
Correct.
And then what's the other one?
Take an existing position within the clinic.
Which is a, just?
Clerical.
Okay.
And doing away with it and creating an office manager position that would be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the clinic, including patient scheduling, staff supervision, financial management, compliance with healthcare regulations, and maintaining positive patient experiences.
Okay, so you're taking a thirteen and a four and getting two tens?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
All right, all right. And then, and then in regards to the grading, obviously, we understand what a ten is, and we understand what a thirteen is within your office. But taking the four to a ten, is, is there other personnel that are doing that particular job? How did you arrive at the ten for the four?
Human Resources arrived at the ten, and they looked at the scope of responsibility of the position. And that was what Cara came up with.
Thank you.
Yes.
This doesn't necessarily mean it's, if this four is gonna become the ten, it's just, these, these are new positions.
The four will be gone, and there'll be a new position that's a ten.
It's just a new position.
That's right.
Any other questions?
I'm around, if you need me, for any questions throughout the next week. I think I have one more ask. Okay?
H, additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash twenty?
Remember all those little accounts I brought to you last month?
Yep.
I'm bringing them to you again. Took out the one thing that we had agreed to that didn't really fit what we wanted. And then the only thing I've added is in equipment, replace our super-old eight hundred megahertz. And I got quotes, and the best one came from Raycom.
Questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to J, it looks like, additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, the Glenn Home Repair and Refurbishment.
Mike Morris, Vigo County Commissioner. Yeah, we're presenting this, we've been working on this. This is a request to rejuvenate the group homes. As you know, there's been a lot of discussion about it, and, and we've got this program moving ahead now in a very positive direction. Actually, about a hundred and eighty degrees from where it was. There were no children being served by this system at all, now there are children. So, in getting our hands on, on the, the homes, et cetera, there's quite a bit of deferred maintenance. And to address that, we've got some figures there that, that start to address it. And the funding source will, was originally planned to come out of the Juvenile Center Non-Reverting Fund. I think there's about four hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars or sixty-some thousand dollars in there right now. And we'd like to request a hundred thousand dollars out of that fund to start with these repairs on these two large homes. So... Yeah, like I say, changed around about a hundred percent, or a hundred and eighty percent of what we were doing. So Heidi Decker, Sheriff here, is, is in charge of the juvenile center. So that, that fund's in, in that juvenile, for the juvenile center right now. But some of these things were talked about and agreed to, but previously. So I guess if there's any, any, you have anything?
Sheriff Fell. Just real briefly, I just wanted to say, as Commissioner Morris stated, these funds are coming from the juvenile center, which the Circuit Court oversees. I'm in with an MOU, so I technically oversee the juvenile center. I just wanted to stand here and say before you that myself and Judge Mulligan both fully support this request of moving this a hundred thousand dollars over to help and benefit and open the group homes to the place where they need to be. It gives us a great opportunity for different alternatives for juveniles, instead of putting all the juveniles in the juvenile center. So it gives us that opportunity. So it's supported by the Commissioner's Office, myself, and Judge Mulligan.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Did I miss, is it for all three group homes or just one?
We only have two.
Currently, we just have two that are certified. The one, it dropped out, we dropped it out of certification, and we have two that are certified right now.
So this hundred thousand would handle both renovations on both houses?
Yes, yes. And we do have this Heidi Decker here from Department of Child Services, if you have any questions of that for need for juvenile services.
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Mike, is there a new non-reverting fund for the group homes?
No, no, we didn't. You, you have funded the group homes to, what, four hundred and, what is it, four hundred and seven? Four hundred some thousand dollars was in the budget. But this is, and Director Lautermilk has, has a request on here. He's reorganized the whole program, so, with the staffing and redone it completely. So he'll have, he'll have a request for that. And so, and as you did, you tur, you were tur, you were, you toured the, the first home, and so you're very aware.
Oh, for sure, it needs help.
And our, our maintenance, oh, and we have a request here to change one of the maintenance money out of the fund that we did fund for the group homes to our maintenance department. And he's going to hire one, a new, new person, an additional person. And the Commissioners' men will take care of the maintenance with that person.
Any other questions? Okay, so then I'm straight. The additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two on page thirty-one is for the non-reverting fund money, correct?
Right.
Okay. And the amended salary ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, Vigo County Homes for Children Restructuring of Positions.
Yeah.
And what does that pertain to?
You want to address that, Director?
Norm Lautermilk, the Director of the Vigo County Group Homes. So I want to clarify a couple of things. There is a non-reverting fund for the group home. It was established, but this money can't be put into that. Can't transfer from one fund to the other. So what's gonna happen is, the auditor's office has been working with me to, just an accounting thing where they put a locator number on the, on the end of it. So a hundred thousand dollars will be appropriated for the non-reverting Juvenile Justice Fund that we receive for holding out-of-county detainees. That fund is accumulated about, when this letter was wrote, about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So there's plenty of money in there. The way they'll track it in the auditor's office is, is we'll submit the claims, but there'll be just a four-digit number at the end to keep it separate from the money spent at the juvenile center. Just an accounting issue, but I wanted to point that out. There has been an ordinance passed by the Commissioners that allows the group home, establish a non-reverting fund for the group home that captures revenue provided by the Department of Child Services, the state of Indiana, for residents that we hold at the group home. And seventy-five percent of that money will return to the general fund to offset the cost for the operation of the group home. And twenty-five percent of that money will be captured into a non-reverting fund so that we can do some of the things we did at the juvenile center and not cost taxpayers any money. That will be state money coming back to us to do renovations and things like that. But until we get kids, we're not gonna get any money, because we can't build DCS. And we, you know, so we're chasing our tail. But we also, you know, I've got a quote for the Rose Hill Group Home, which has bedbugs, and I can't put anybody up there until I get rid of the bedbugs. Well, it's four thousand seven hundred dollars is my quote. Well, I don't have that in my budget. So without this appropriation, I can't get that home ready to receive kids. The Glenn Home, which is the one on South Sixth Street, just is in dire need of repairs and refurbishment. You know, I had to go through four inspections with DCS just to open the door. Today, we have three kids. So in a week, we were able to accomplish that. So, you know, Katie bar the door, we're gonna get kids, and you're gonna get your money back. Estimates will be to be able to pay you back for the entire budgeted amount by the end of the year. But I've gotta fix some stuff. I mean, that's just it. I mean, maintenance has been significantly less than what it should have been over the past twelve months easily. And so we've, we've got to get that place in repair before we can even let kids stay there. And so we've done what we can now within our budget, but it's just come to a point where we need help. And that fund seems like a great place to take it from, because again, it's user fees. Other counties paying to hold kids, it's not tax dollars. It's going from one, you know, one per, one fund that helps children into another. And if you want to talk about the reorganization, I can.
Hold on a second. Councilman Wallace?
I, I've got one question, not that you'd be expected to be an expert in this area, but is there, is there anything out there that would allow us to help minimize the chance of bedbugs coming back in once you do overcome it?
Boy, I don't know. I didn't know we had them, and we had this home inspected. And I said, hey, by the way, go up there and look at that one just to see. Because we, last week, we had five requests for placement for females, and that's our female home. So trying to move forward and maybe start taking those kids, and they found bedbugs. So they have to treat it like three times, and it's, each time, it's a certain amount, and averages, it adds up to about five thousand dollars. I don't know anything about them. I just know that, you know...
That they're expensive.
They're tough to get rid of, and once you get rid of them, you don't want them back.
Would, would purchasing, instead of buying standard mattresses, air mattresses that are...
I don't know.
Something that bedbugs won't be attracted to as much?
They're in the carpet, they're in the, they're in the...
Oh, wow.
They're in the curtains. They're infested. So...
Sheriff Fell, do you have something?
No, sorry. Just ten seconds. While Director Lautermilk's standing here, I just wanted to say, this is, what, your second day? That's your new job. Just want to thank him for his service as a juvenile director for the last five years or so. He did a great job there, great work, very much appreciated by the Sheriff's Office, I know the community, the juvenile center. If anybody can turn the group homes around and make them a benefit for the community, I'm sure it's, it's Norm Lautermilk. So just want to say thank you. So just want to say thank you and appreciate your service.
Thank you.
So I don't know if I, I mean, I can look into it, I don't know, as far as the mattresses. I mean, what I'm hoping to do is to be able to use this money to do 90% of the refurbishment at the group home on South Sixth, and then come to you guys sometime in the summer and use some of that money we captured from DCS to start taking care of the north home. And then, and then we'll work on reopening that back up. I'm sure that this $100,000 will be able to be more than enough for both, but just in case. But I hope that we'll be able to supplement all of our major improvements through non-tax dollars and through user fees.
Thank you.
There's been vacant for at least a year, hasn't it?
Yeah. So, yeah, and the, the group home up north has been empty for well over a year, not had children, so. Are you ready for the next one? I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, if you are.
I didn't know if you had to announce it or whatever.
No.
So again, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Norm Lautermilke and the Director of the Vigo County Juvenile, or strike that, it's hard, hard to break habits, Vigo County Group Homes. One of the things that we did when we first looked at trying to get the group homes reopened is we met with DCS, Heidi Decker's here from DCS, you know, and Haley Cawthorn, and there was a whole team of them that came in to meet with us. And one of the things they, they talked about was a reorganization, not only of the administrative staff and trying to reorganize and change some of their duties responsibilities, but where things were lacking with DCS, and also changing of what's called the direct care staff, those people that work with the children every day. So I'd like to just talk today about the administrative part of it because the, the direct care staff is a whole nother, another beast. One of, you know, one of the problems we have is we are under what's called a house-parent model. So our house parents, the youth care specialists, what they're called here, they live in the house for 48 hours straight, then they're off for 48 hours. Well, nobody, nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to be away from home for 48 hours. I mean, I was a firefighter for a number of years, and 24 hours is bad enough, let alone being gone for 48. And so it's difficult finding qualified employees, people that, that pass the background that DCS requires. It's, it's very extensive. And so working with children, you have to be very careful, and the vetting process is, is enormous. And so, you know, we have to be able to change those hours to get people that want to work. You can go to an eight-hour shift, or you can go to a 12-hour shift. 12 hours cheaper, less employees, so that's what we're going to go to. So I'll be coming back and meeting with council members that are interested in talking about this hopefully in the next month or so to change the direct care staff from a 48-hour position, which is crazy, to, to a 12-hour position and trying to, to get that. With the money I have currently, the vacancies that I have had, there's more than enough money to do it this year. But come budget time, I think that, you know, I'll need like a whopping $65,000 more. Now, that's just for one home. If I want to open the other home, it's going to require, you know, $419,000 to additionally to hire those people. But if your, DCS pays $1,100 a day per child, you know, we have a license for eight kids, that's 3.2 million. So I'd be, you know, if we only take five kids, that's 2 million, we'd be able to pay the county back plus some. So not necessarily a money-making scheme, but absolutely an opportunity to reduce the burden on the taxpayers while providing services for kids in our community that need it. So going back to this, this request, there's a few things that I noticed when I took over that just didn't make a whole lot of sense that I wanted to change, more of a managerial type changes that, for job efficiency. And so, you know, as the letter stated, I would like to eliminate the office manager position. I never had one at the juvenile center, so there's no, real no reason to have one there. And I'd like to eliminate the maintenance supervisor. He was only one person, but yet he was paid a supervisor salary. So in speaking with Commissioners, they would like to transfer that position into the maintenance budget so that their maintenance people can, we can hire someone, reduce him to, to a seven instead of leaving him at an eight, which will save the county money, and then let their maintenance staff hire that position, and then he would work for all of county maintenance instead of just for one, one piece of property. So the good thing about that is that, you know, we can use him for other buildings instead of just, you know, leaving him for the group home. Changing positions, the continued care worker to a family and youth services coordinator from a 12 to a 13, changing the therapeutic case manager to compliance slash finance manager. Again, with the revenue stream that would be coming in from DCS, we need someone to manage that, which could be well over a million dollars. We were, we have a person at the juvenile center that manages the fund, you know, and that fund brings in 340,000 a year. So this is three times that amount. We need to have somebody that, that we can trust to do that job. Also, the compliance part, DCS requires certain things that, as with Department of Corrections, as far as compliance, making sure you're doing things properly, multiple inspections a year. And so this person would help, help manage that. Changing a position from program director to operations director, there's really no, there's no delineation of chain of command, there's not a person who people answer to, who people answer to. And so it's hard when someone asks for a day off or something, they just go straight to the director, or they don't know who to ask, and they're asking all of these people. And it's really, if you're into, into treatment, you don't need to be concerned about getting some kid to school because someone marked off sick. So there's just really needs to be restructuring the duties and responsibilities. And that's what we came up with the past really 60 days of working with people. Change the treatment slash, the treatment director to treatment slash licensing director. In order for us to possess the DCS licensing required to operate a group home, you must possess a master's degree. And so luckily, Kara Garavich, raise her hand, and that's my team back there of administrators, Suzie Rick and, you know, Katie Bartlett-Hagan, those are the ones that really make the place go. I'm just, you know, a figurehead. They do it all, and they do an amazing job. I just think that they were not allowed to spread their wings and, and show what they could do. So she is a, has a master's degree, and so the licenses right now are temporarily in my name as an interim administrator. We would transfer those licenses into her name so that we could make sure we met all the state requirements. And because of that master's degree, obviously, we want to make sure that she's properly, you know, paid for that. And then the last thing, which I talked to you about, is we want to transfer the maintenance position from the group home back to the Commissioners' purview and have it work, you know, in the maintenance department under Ricky. We need a lot of work at the group home, that's true, but there are a lot of other properties that the Commissioners manage that need help as well. So it's not fair for us to have our own when other places don't have theirs. So we'd like to move that back. Second page really is a summary, and really the bottom line is what you should look at. If I do all of those changes, and these, these aren't my figures, these came directly from the Auditor's Office, who, by the way, they, they worked really hard with me in trying to prepare these figures and, and so I, you know, trustful documents that came from our payroll clerk that was able to, to let me know exactly what's going on, including FICA, PERF benefits, things like that. So if we do all the things I'd like to do, it's a savings of $43,000 and some change to the county, just to make those changes. I think it will run more efficiently. I think it will be streamlined, there'll be a delineation of chain of command, and then, you know, we'll, we'll approach you again about the youth care workers, you know, directly, but we need to get these administrators in place first. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Ellis?
Do, I know, you and I had a conversation once before, I don't recall the answer. Do we know what the approximate demand is for how many children might be in these facilities? Again, not, like you said, not that we want to make a money-making venture for the county, but it does help us understand what the implication will be on the taxpayers.
Yeah. I think that our email got broke when DCS found out that we were open. That's how many people that. I'll let her address it.
Hi, I'm Haley Cawthorn. I am with DCS in a consultant, clinical consultant capacity. So my team in the state directly places kids in all of these facilities across the entire state. And so currently, I think when I ran the report last week, we have over 1,000 kids across the state in different residential treatment and shelter care settings. And so I would agree with Norm that the floodgates did open for the Vigo County Homes for Children as soon as we were notified that they were ready to start taking kids. I tried to control it, and it just kind of spiraled out of control. So there was a lot of excitement. We were, we were very ready to start sending kids. There's a big demand in this area to keep kids local if we can, in an effort to like reunify with families, and then also stepping them down from different treatment options we have in the area. So we do have Harsha, which is an acute inpatient hospital, and then we have Jabalt, which is a higher structured residential treatment option. So this is what offers the opportunity to kind of step kids down from those settings in addition to keeping them local for reunification of Vigo and surround families.
Thank you.
Sorry, yeah, I didn't know any of that. I just know that I'm getting emails for requests for placement, and so I refer to them, and, you know, we have three right now, we're licensed for eight, so we'll take at that one home. And then we changed it from male, female, just to male only, and then the north one will be for, for girls. But I've got to get this up and running.
Councilwoman Gentry?
Yep.
Mr. Lautermilke, so combined total of beds that you currently have available, right now, you've just got one house?
Yeah.
Eight beds, max?
Yes, we have, again, we have two houses that are licensed, and both of them are able to take kids. I just can't put any up there because of the bedbugs.
How many, how many beds will be available at the north house?
The north house, eight, is what we're licensed for through the state, and then eight at the south, well, South Sixth Street.
So 16 kids?
16. And I think we can increase the license to maybe 10 per, but it's based on square footage, and I've not really, you know.
How many, how many employees do you currently have?
I currently have, I think that I have 12.
And how many kids do you currently have?
How many kids? Three.
So you've got 12 employees right now on payroll, and we have three kids?
Yeah. But you understand that not all of those people on payroll work with direct care with children?
Understand that we had 14 before the Director took over with zero children.
So I, one of my concerns is, is that, I need you to be square with us in regards to these regrading of employees, is how much of that is a wish list, and how much is it a, a demand from DCS to make you compliant with some type of state rules to make you operational? Is there any part of this that is demanded from the state level to do these regradings?
No.
Are we setting ourselves up from a, from a standpoint that if we regrade these right now while we are building this out, you've got three kids, they're going to go to 16, if we regrade these now and the second house comes online and you need more staff, then this proposed savings that I see technically to me would be, we would start to have to hire in people at, at the same grades that you're asking for in this increases?
Well, first I want to correct a couple of things. One, we only have two people that are direct care workers. Three of them are night guardians. So if you want to add them together that are around the children or work with the children daily, that's five. That's it. And so the budget was cut last summer when they weren't taking as many kids. And so, you know, the staff has been reduced, the budget's been reduced. So if we do decide to open the group home up north, I can't unless I come to you with an additional appropriation for more money to hire more people.
And that's what I'm worried about is, is, I mean, I'm looking at the big picture rather than the short-term picture. What, what?
We are going to get reimbursed through the DCS.
This is all going to be paid back?
This is going to get, I mean, it will be.
Well, that, that's the plan. That's the plan.
It's, it's, Mr. Gentry, it's not a plan, it's a fact. The DCS pays 10, you know, $1,089 for every emergency care shelter child per day that's in our facility. And so, you know, if you do the math, five kids at a, at a year's is going to bring you $2 million. And if our budget's 1.2, then we're going to be able to pay you back plus have more money to go back to general fund.
Right. And so what I would say to you, again, this is just my personal preference, is I would like to see some of this in motion before we start considering, because, because, quite frankly, it's a great plan. I get it. I, I've done my background on it. I understand, I spoke to Commissioner Schweitzer over the weekend. He gave me information as well. I think he's the one that was primarily working with you. So I get that. But what I'm concerned is, is are we getting the cart before the horse? Let's get this thing rolling and then see, see what we need staff-wise. We may need more staff than you possibly can predict at this point, so.
This, this is getting the cart rolling.
By regrading everybody?
Exactly.
But he just said, Commissioner, out of all due respect, he just said that it's, it's, it's not a mandate. It, it's not, there's nothing in DCS that requires this, so.
Well, I think that's a little bit of a misnomer. This, the houses have to be staffed. Well, if you'd rather direct it yourself, you can, but this is a step, a total step in the, to try to do this. If you don't want to fund it, don't fund it, okay?
I think, I think my point is, is that I'm not, I don't think that I'm saying that I don't want to fund it. I think what I'm trying to say is, is are we, it seems like we're doing quite a bit of this regrading when we really don't know exactly what we're going to need at the end of the day. That's why I said, is any of this mandated? So quite frankly, in six months.
I got a question, Norm.
Hold on a second, Nancy.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, wait till Councilwoman Gentry's there.
Okay.
It's really hard.
Yeah.
So, so, so my, 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 my thing is, is, is we do so much short-term thought process. Now, there's been a lot of work, Auditor's Office, Commissioners, yourself, but I would think that we're going to have a better idea in six months how many people you need and what they should all be graded based off the success.
Councilwoman Wager. Can you hold on a second, please?
So, so, so what I'm saying, I'm, I'm not saying, don't do it.
Right.
What I'm trying to say is, is let's make sure that this is successful. So if we make a whole bunch of rash movements, are, are we going to get where we want to go? And, and, and that's, that's my question is, is long-term, if this thing goes back to three, goes back to two, what, whatever, and we understand we've got X dollars coming in, you, you may want way more staff, or you may want different grades. And rather than do this three or four times, you got to staff, and I'm just, I'm just saying, can, can we get some of this going? We've got three kids now. I was told by Commissioner Schweitzer, there was recently only one kid. So I, you know, we're obviously going in the right direction.
Yeah.
So, so the point would be, is now the time to do this? And I'm, I'm specifically talking about the regrading.
So is that the question?
That's the question.
Absolutely. Now's the time. And because if we don't do it now, we're not going to do it. It, it has to happen. If I came here and wanted what I need to open the north home, which is another $500,000, nobody would vote for it. They would say, prove yourself first. So that's what we're doing. We're doing, you know, you asked about mandates from the DCS. DCS requested that we reorganize. DCS requested that we reorganize, combine some positions because they didn't feel like some of them.
So, so DCS asked for this? I, I.
No, I didn't say, no, 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 da, 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 don't put words in my mouth. I said, DCS asked us to, to combine some positions. They did not mandate anything. They didn't set forth a guideline that we were required to follow in order to get my license or required to follow in order to, to open up. What they did was make some very strong suggestions that we reorganize as well as the direct care stack and what their, what their hour, what their schedule is. I can't even deal with that. I just hired a girl, lasted three weeks and just quit. Why? Because she's not going to work 48 hours. It took her three weeks to pass all the background investigations. You know, our back is against the wall. This is, and here's the other thing. I started working with this well before Thanksgiving. So that's November, December, January, February, March. This isn't a rash decision. This isn't something that just I'm flying by the seat of my pants. This is something that I've thought through. I've met with people, discussed from the state, different, different group homes across the state in order to figure out the best way. And see, these are the only, only the managers for. Forget the people that, that work with the children every day. These are just the people that manage, that will deal with the compliancing, the treatment, the, all of the things that we deal with, with, with helping the kids.
But, but you've got 12 employees right now.
No, I don't.
You don't have 12?
I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, plus me is nine. And two of them are house parents called youth care specialists. Three of them are night guardians. So the night guardians sit in a room and check on the kids when they're sleeping while the house parent sleeps. Because in the 48 hours they're working, they got to go to bed sometime. So that's, that's, we're paying people to watch people sleep. That's crazy.
And last question I'll have?
Yeah.
And, and I will contact you directly afterwards.
No, that's fine. And I'll take you on a tour wherever you want. Yeah.
The, the grade changes?
Yes.
That are listed. Where did they come from? Did you, did you work with HR or is? How did you, how did you reclassify these from one grade to another?
Well, I was here when the Baker-Tilly study happened and was very involved in that with the, you know, juvenile center. I helped write job descriptions for every single person that worked for me from the correctional scale into the general scale that everyone else has. Met with people, no, I did not meet with HR. I met with my staff and got their job descriptions, reviewed them, found any duplicate or, you know, blurring of the lines, if you will. Tried to get those separated a little bit, combine some based on the recommendation from DCS. And then, and then I put it together.
Were you trying to achieve pay raises and use the grade movement to get the pay raises? Or did you just assemble like, I need this amount of money to keep a qualified employee?
Yep. So it, it wasn't a choice of those two. It was, I need this to keep this qualified employee. They're taking on more responsibilities, so I've got to try to help them. She's getting a license for us and that's going to allow us to make $4 million a year. Gee, I think we need to pay her something. The office manager quit, so we need to try to replace that. But I don't really want an office manager that just pays bills. I need someone that's going to be able to work with the kids and work with the school corporation. So let's make it a compliance manager and, and a finance manager. Oh, and by the way, you know, that's how I arrived at it.
Okay.
It was, it was a very intense thought process and a lot of sleepless nights over the past five minutes.
Well, favor I ask of you?
Yeah.
Is we've got a week until next week. I would love for HR to review and weigh in as to whether these grades work within the entire county system. The last thing I want to do is regrade people. And when you regrade them, then another department says, hey, you know, Tom or Betty should be a thirteen instead of a ten. So we have to weigh that out as well. So I would kindly ask if you could find some time to, to meet with HR and see if they could give their opinion as to the grades.
I will send an email to them tomorrow requesting that they weigh in on this or have a meeting with me. And I'll have a report to you by next week. I just want to remind you that there's only one department that deals with kids with this type of trauma. So you can't compare me to someone else.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. You got a question?
Yeah. I was wondering if the group homes went through the Baker-Tilly study. Was a, under the Baker-Tilly study and got these grades to begin with?
Yes.
They was?
Yes.
Okay. See, that worries me because everybody wanting the grade changes too. That worries me a lot because it's just opened up a can of worms. I know you're different, but it just worries me.
Just make sure that you understand that I'm not asking for a grade change simply for a grade change.
You're asking what now?
I'm not asking some, I'm not saying, hey, they're a 10, let's make him a 12. I'm saying they're a 10 and we're adding these additional duties. And I'm eliminating these positions and, and adding those duties on top of them. So therefore they, 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 they need to be compensated for their additional duties. If you're doing the same job that you were doing when Baker-Tilly was here, then I don't see why we need to change you. It needs, it needs to come to the council. However, if you're doing additional duties, if your job functions have changed, if they've changed because the director that was there for 40 years is now gone and someone's if different and we're trying to move things comparable to other places in the state, then, then we're trying to do that. And so, so, you know, I'm not giving someone a pay raise for the sake of giving a pay. I'm not asking for them to get a pay raise for the sake of giving a pay raise. I'm not at all, period. I'm, I'm trying to combine positions, save the county money to the tune of forty-seven thousand dollars and, and, you know, realign some things within the administration.
And I know you do a great job, you know, and you do your best. Yeah, so.
And that's one of the reasons we're, we're realigning the maintenance department. So they pay, pay grade will be the same as it reflect the rest of our maintenance department. Plus then when we have not a assigned maintenance person, then if we need to do work and it takes three maintenance people, we'll put them on their job.
Mr. President, I'd point out also that at the time of the Baker-Tilly, group homes had no children. They weren't supervising people. They were just sitting on their butts.
It shows.
Right.
So you give me a year, I'll get you money.
Councilman Gentry?
Just, just to follow up. I, what I'm saying is, is rather, I, I think it will validate and support your position if you have someone review this and provide us their thoughts. Whether we'll agree with it or not, you know, but I, but, you know, again, it's, it's, it's not that you haven't done the work. Your wife was in the auditor's office. I'm sure she, you know, she, she probably helped you out. I'm sure these sleepless nights and so forth. The point is, is I just think that that would help the council. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah. And I will reach out to HR to, to ask them what their opinion is. But this is absolutely my idea. My best effort to try to manage what was a failing department in this government for the last few years. And in order to turn it around, because I don't fail. So in order to turn it around, we need to make some changes. And those changes aren't superficial. I promise you.
Thank you.
M. Amended salary ordinance 2025-08 Assessor's Office Pay Increase.
Good evening, Council. Council President. I'm Kevin Gardner, County Assessor. This is, and I'm not sure how we approach this part. This isn't really a new request. This is similar to the request that was last month that was tabled. So I don't know if I'm supposed to say I want to withdraw last month's request and this is a new one? Or how you want to proceed with that?
I think the, unless somebody brings the issue up off the table, Kevin, then, you know, that issue remains in that state. So I think these requests are perfectly appropriate to be heard tonight. And if that's, if one of those is what the council ultimately decides to move forward with, then their approval or disapproval would ultimately render all other submissions moot.
Okay. Okay. Then going from there, in this request, as you can see, the first part of it, I put in two options to accomplish this. The first part, I think, were, there's too many reservations with making grade changes because of the Baker-Tilly study. So basically we're ignoring the first part, the option one, which takes us to the option two. And my option two request would be to take my staff and Harrison's staff to the midpoint. I do have some issues with that, but we can discuss that at a later time. Based on the information I've got, the employee savings of removing one staff member is $87,911.33. That includes their insurance, FICA, PERF, everything else that goes with it. We also had a discussion because at, in the last submission, there was actually going, even though it was a savings overall, because it affects two different funds, there was going to be an additional appropriation to one, but a savings to the other. So in my communications with HR and with Harrison Assessor, there's also 6,000 part-time hours that our two offices share. We are willing to give up 4,000 of those part-time hours. By giving up those part-time hours, which the rate is 14.17 per hour, and then including the FICA that would also go along with that, that's another $61,016.2. If you take those and you do the increases that I was requesting, taking us to the midpoint, that still leaves the savings to the county of $79,514.32. It's my understanding and I, I think, and the, the last page, I'll go into that. The last page basically just shows you how it affects each fund. For example, County General, it's putting back $42,818.39. And in the reassessment fund, it's putting back roughly $35,600 some odd dollars. I can't read this because the writing's pretty small, but the total is correct. Back to what I was getting ready to say, I don't miss very many council meetings. I don't miss very many commissioner meetings. So I try to do, to stay on top and stay with everything. I think the goal of the council since the Baker-Tilly study in 2023 was to get everyone to the midpoint. And obviously that creates budgeting issues because there's only so much funds. So if that's the council's goal, our two offices have worked together to become more efficient, to overlap positions, to overlap the work that's being done between the offices so that we can accomplish this with one less person. So I've given you the ability to get us to that midpoint, which is where your goal is, at no cost to the county, a savings of almost $80,000. That's really my whole stance here. I mean, I, we're going to get to the point where the council wants us and where ultimately the staff would all like to be. And it's a savings to the county by doing it. Now, in the process, it is, I've heard different issues around the building and the rumor mills and stuff. And we did not terminate anyone to give other people a raise. This is a position that was vacated. I think through attrition, any other officer wants to do something along those lines, that's how they do it. So you're not removing a person. You're not, no one's losing a job. This was a job that was vacated. We decided not to fill. And by not filling that, that should allow for the benefit to the rest of the staff. Because obviously, if it's been staffed like this for the last 20 years and we're removing a position, more work is going on everyone else. So they should be compensated for that. So I'm not asking to just give them a raise by whatever number I come up with. I'm asking, take it to the midpoint, which was where the county wanted us to go anyway. That's the basis of my request. I did also hand Council President the, another document that I had prepared that I think he's going to distribute to you. That's something I think that needs to be looked at, at budget time. Because for the Baker-Tilly study to stay relevant, it can't be based on values that were given in 2023. And in this process of what I've been doing, I found out that the 25 percentile has been increased two straight years. But it was increased by the 3% that you gave. It should have only been increased by the cost of living. But at the same time, you're also supposed to increase every other category. And that's not saying you have to take an employee directly to that category. They could be somewhere in the middle if that's where they are based on the increases you're giving. But for your study to be relevant, you have to increase the entire study in every position. And that's not been done. The midpoint was not increased the first year. It was increased the second year, but only for the top portion, the general employees. It wasn't increased for the other levels, the 500 levels and department heads. In the second 3% increase, it still wasn't increased for the midpoint on the 500 levels or the department heads. So now you've got a study that's, instead of being nine and a half percent or 9.2% between each category, now you're 6% between midpoint and 25 percentile, which is not what the study was set up to do. So again, I think that's something that can be addressed during budget time. If the auditor's office or council would like me to create the spreadsheet and put all those numbers in, I don't have a problem doing that, just so that you've got the form and it's, it's up to date. But I just think that's also something else that needs to be done.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilman Ellis?
Yeah. This may be a question for Mr. Wright. Is there anything, is it okay if I bring up?
Yeah.
What we discussed the other day? All right. So is there anything legally that would prevent? I think his idea is a great idea. And I think all of our goal is to get all county employees up to the midpoint. And so is there anything that would prevent us as a council of having, holding the position that any department that's not currently at midpoint, that would like to get their entire staff at midpoint? We do the math. We see how many positions would need to be eliminated to get every, to allow the funds to be there, to get everyone else up to midpoint? And say, it doesn't have to, you don't have to let people go. You could wait and do it through attrition. Or if you have some dead weight and they decide there's somebody that does need to be let go, they can do it that way as well. But the goal ultimately, if, it's going to put more work on everyone else. So why shouldn't everyone that's left there be able to get to that midpoint and absorb the funds that we're saving by eliminating the positions? Could we do that across the board with every department?
You, yes, you could. It would just be each one of those, Councilman Ellis, would require an additional appropriation. You know, it would have to go through that same process individualized. But as a policy, you could certainly have the, you know, push that information out there that this is what the council is looking for in analyzing these requests.
Right. And I think, I think there was some concerns with, maybe some of us, that if we did this for him, then everyone else, other departments were going to want to go to that midpoint. But if we simply hold the position that, look, if everyone does what he's doing, then yeah, there's no reason we couldn't do that.
No, I, I, I agree with that. I think if you're, you know, creating a point on which to distinguish this request from others, I would agree that the fact that Mr. Gardner is, you know, not filled a position that had become vacated and is seeking to redistribute that salary across his other employees. You know, I think that very logical and yeah, would be a, I mean, it's just, it's hard for the council to adopt generalized policies because every point requires a vote. And so the, you know, and your prerogative on that could change at any point. But certainly, you know, a recognition from the other departments that this is what the council is looking for would, I'm sure reverberate through the annex in the other buildings.
Thank you. Councilman Gentry?
So, Mr. Gardner, I want to tell you that love, love the concept, but I, but I don't think that executing this will net what you're coming up with. And, and one of the things that you said last month was this position has been empty since January of 2024. So the county has had zero outlay for the position. I'm also concerned that, and, and Councilman Ellis and I have talked about this as well. If a department has a position that is vacated or a person retires, what, what have you, and there is a current outlay. and there is a current outlay by the county, and we would take that position and spread it out. The county doesn't technically save anything. And in this particular case, we're saving absolutely nothing because right now that, that position has been sitting open. Probably hindsight being 2020, it probably should have been eliminated when the last budget committee reviewed this, eh, from the standpoint that it may have been an extra position. So as far as the, the numbers and everything that you're presenting, I'm concerned that this can't even be duplicated across multiple departments as well from the standpoint that departments are different sizes. You have a finite group of people. It's a little bit easier to, to maneuver the money. But if you had a larger department, it would take them two or three positions to be able to accomplish what you're wanting to do. So I'm not sure there's equality there as well. But, um, my concern is, I'm not sure that we need this position in the first place. It's been sitting there open, and we're spending $0. So there can be no savings because we're actually going to start spending money, eh, with your other employees. That said, I don't want anybody misconstrue that I don't think your employees need to be at midpoint. Because I've already had that conversation with you. And I wish and hope that when the budget committee meets, and I said this from the first meeting as well, budget committee, take it to the budget committee. I want your employees at midpoint. I think that was a promise that a previous council made to all county employees. We're going to move you to midpoint. So I want that to occur, and I want that to happen. I just don't know that this is the exact same, the right way to do it. Good idea. I just don't think that we're saving any money.
Well, I guess the, the one way that I will address that, and if I don't understand budgeting the way it's understood through other people, then that's my fault. When you budget at the year, you budget for every position that's in there. So you budgeted for this $87,000 to be spent this year. If it's not spent, then it reverts back into County General or reassessment or whatever fund it was taken out of. But you did budget for that. So we could have filled that position, and you would have spent the $87,000. So by not filling that position, we absolutely saved the county $87,000 because then at the end of the year, that's going to revert back into County General. So the savings is there. You took the money. It was set for something that it didn't get spent on. So now you get to put it back in the account, which is, maybe that's a little bit difficult to picture that way. But it was money that was accounted for to spend. On your personal level, if you know your electric bill's $300 a month, you set back $300 a month. If for some reason that month it was only $200, you saved $100. You put it back into your account. This is the exact same thing. And when you talk about the size of offices, our two offices combined, full-time staff is 21 people. And then we've also got the 6,000 part-time hours. So we're not really that small of an office. I know there's some out there bigger in the 30, 35, but we're 21 people.
Yeah. I, I just, I think that if we're all in this together, we're trying to get everybody to midpoint. I, I strongly hope that the money is there to be able to get the entire, eh, entire county to midpoint as it was promised by several councils previously. So, um, that's my goal, and I, I understand your concept. I'm just saying that it's really hard for me to believe that this is a savings because there is zero outlay right now. Whether you fill it or you didn't fill it, it's empty. And it's been empty since January of 2024. And so I think at this point, it's more, in my opinion, you probably don't need that position. But that doesn't knock the idea that we need to get your employees to midpoint, just like I want all the employees in the county to get to midpoint. So it's a balancing act, so.
The last thing I'd like to say is, is you saying that it's been empty for a year, so we probably don't need that position anyway. What you need to understand is when we've got an, when we've got a staff member that retires or quits or whatever, and we've got that empty spot, if it takes us six months to fill that spot, we still have to do that work. Nothing changed. It just means someone else is going to step up and do that work. For example, me as the county assessor, I go out in the field. I know Harrison's county assessor goes out in the field. Because if that needs to be done, and you don't have the staff to do it because someone's gone or someone has quit and never been able to fill that spot, we do that extra work to get that done. I don't do it for a pat on the back. I do it because that's the requirement of my office. So just because it's been empty for a year doesn't necessarily mean it doesn't need to be filled or that we should have gotten rid of it a long time ago. It just means people stepped up to fill that work, take on that workload.
Any other questions, comments?
I did want to add one more thing, Dave. Something that can't be done is an elected position's salary can't change mid-year. So once it's set, it's set for the year. So the changes that I'm saying for the Harrison assessor and myself would actually have to be something that would be discussed at budget time. My hopes at that time would be if you passed this, that you would also do that at budget time for next year. Otherwise, now you've created another disparity between what the pays used to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to public comment. Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, meeting's adjourned.